It's preparing it. Give me one second.
Good evening. Call this meeting to order. This is a regular reception of the Mayor and Council of the City of Disney. County Coach, you say, Arizona. In here on Tuesday, August fifteenth, twenty nine, three at seven oh forty P M. For our January's. Well, obviously.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill. Councilmember Johnny Giacchino. Councilmember Frank Davis is excused. Mayor Ken Budge. Councilmember Leslie Johns. Councilmember Mal Sui. Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein. City staff, Stephen Parkin, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Matthew Gurney, public works director, Jim Richardson, fire chief, Joe Estes, city attorney.
Thank you. And all we're leaving will stand for quality reflection. We'll have a question. But it's.
Um, it seems as though our flag is.
You brought the flags back. They were camp. You mad? Just standing there.
One actually just to the flag. United States. Okay, um. Don't worry about no proclamations. Um, only answers I have without objection if I will move item nine or item eight. To have the city managers before we go through the second session. There are no objections. We'll do that. Uh, I have nobody signed up to follow the public, so we'll just move on with general business. First order is a court house payable at motions. I move that we take the town's panel and you now to three hundred and a thousand. Nine hundred and thirty dollars enforcement subject to availability on second. And a motion second. Do we have questions on accounts payable? My only question is the. Billy Magnus, uh, on page five, the. This water and the hammer top has to the harder part.
That's correct.
Anybody else have any questions? Final word. Okay, um, public works what's staying for call. For Matt's. Right? That's your situation. Cool.
Um, I'll answer that. That's been anticipated someday. He was, he was promoted to public works director. Which is a job where he acquired a bachelor's degree. It's given not completed. And so part of the deal was, uh, he would work for us at reduced salary. Uh, in order to pay the tuition.
Anything else? So you know, we have a motion of second, pay accounts payable, and not a beer and point five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents. All votes in favor, some of the same. Aye.
Aye.
Close May. Carry down the ice pack. Moving on to this very loud competitive end of. So we have. A tennis. Uh, you approve on July eighteen. We have. Page three, sorry, three pages. Two minutes. One is for July eight, eleven, for all this third. We have one for acceptance of the recognition from the Parks and Rec Committee. We have two. Rideaway permits, one both for the high school, one for the parade, um, the. The other one for the homecoming parade, the other one for big parade. And we have, uh, one for. The rideaway permit for the Evergreen Cemetery, having kept. And we have four. Blue park would sell the use permits for the fifty-one thousand. And one approval for. The rideaway permit for the. Out to festival and buying the last piece for an equivalent license. Oh, and then we had one on panel, which is a license for. So we got on paper camera. And that's a full out of the question. Yeah, for the discussion, whether I'm. Just for my. Okay, um, I'm going to pull G through H just to update. To make sure that you see that what was handed out was the new, um, charge for the one thousand. What we wanted as an excessive grant, so we wanted to make sure that that was entered into record. So, uh, outside of that one, is anybody else? That's it. So we'll just pull F through J. So I'll entertain a motion for items A through E and. I drew L. I move that we can contribute on that item state and I through him. As second, as a motion of second. Uh, as a motion, all votes in favor, for the by the same. Aye.
Aye.
Who's made, every nine guys. Let me just. G through H, as you see on your, on your depth, there's a, um. They were broken down into four different segments. I question why it wasn't released. Um, charges on there and that was inadvertently wrapped off. So if you have to overall for all these permits for the one thousand point nine. Two thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and forty-nine cents. If it was listed to me through H. So next. So I make a motion to approve items G through H with the amended, uh, permit fees. Have a second. I second this part. A motion of second to approve the, uh. Then give us D through H with the new permit fees, all votes in favor, for the by the same. Aye.
Aye.
Close May. Carry down. Have us remove. Moving on to item F. For a part of the cemetery.
Right.
When you permit by the busy pride, the use of Evergreen Cemetery. Would have to be held on Saturday, Saturday, something like that. Um, yeah. Sure, when we brought the. This can't describe the people.
Right, um, this, this permit is, as in order to get a better insurance rate. Um, on. About the use of. Himself. So, um. Consequently, we're coming to support down there. And when we did come to support down there. It was already. This. Even that's prior to the. They were already. Uh, to read my house, especially Bonaduce, we're also partnering with. Um, Francine Cowles, who local resident, or former resident. The history books on specters and other haunted entities in Disney and Cloche's County.
I'll let them.
Question. Okay.
Okay, um. It, that, one of my questions was, what is the. Do with credit? Because what it looks like to me is that it is, um. On the, what you do say. Um. You did say on the, on the bottom that ticket sales will benefit the Evergreen Cemetery Committee. But it's not outlined how it went and at what rate or anything like that. Um, I also have a complete problem with a self-guided tour. Um, and it says it's going to be at the graves of Disney for years, but two of the seniors. We don't have any of that either. And it just says that it's an event being put on by Bonaduce, the television reality show. I have a really big issue with that. Um, and they're using Greenway Manor, you know, the base for this. For this series that they're going to be filming, um. With the self, you know, when they ever bring some community, they vary things. It was our city committee that did that. It was very thoughtful. It was very informational. And they still plan on doing that.
Correct.
So why? Is this, I mean, things like this taking away from it? And then, um. Yes, because, you know, uh, fairly. We're tired of it. Tired of it. Um, and have I else? Have a. Parents kind of want to make sense of it. That, um. You know, it's fine to be a sunset and it's going to add to the odd, ominous effect. And really kind of isn't. On this is giving me an impression that something bad or unpleasant is going to happen. Threatening, suspicious, and menacing. I, we read the cemetery last night and it is nothing but that. It is. Calm, it is serene. It's where we have our loved ones. I mean, I personally have four generations. Very. In that, I'm close. And I know that when little school, they always use a, uh. They're, uh, where they go across. And, you know, they're usually. One year. They're. And when I go after, there are praying all over my desk. That headstone, um, was. I mean, we designed it. It's not just run of the mill. It was not, it was pretty crazy. Um, you know, take care of it. So I try to get as much of the prayer off as I, as I could. Um, and it's just considered being watched. So with this, that, that is toward. How many people are going to use that? Things like this. And then, um. One of the angels on the line, brother. Was stolen. And was again, not a research iron either. It was, uh, imported from. Um, so, I don't know. I just, I really. An issue with this. Bring it forward.
I guess a lot of people.
Um, I really want to. To me, it's so disrespectful.
And that's the first thing. Part of it. Um, and by self-guided, we. Were guides going from person to person. We will have hearing. We will have. Because it will be a dust. It will be closer to dark. We want to make sure that, um, we will have a lift path. In the four areas that we're going looking at. And shows the four areas because of some of the historical characters that are in those four areas. But also trying to heat people onto that name and tree and street as much as possible. And off the graves, um, and off the, the, the grass or, or, or down the area. Um, let me go back. We'll play the council member. I was fine about the, the. The, um, filming. The filming was initially intended as part of this. Um, because they were looking at a, um, highlights and they wanted to be B-roll along this. Uh, along with the event, um, to do so. However, we now face ourselves with a strike in Hollywood. That has put a hold on, on any public. At all. Um, if. They could have resolved something or can resolve something prior to the event, then there's possible, um. Chances of coming in and doing B-roll filming along with, and filming of some of the characters telling their stories. But, um, as closer to the event time that we get, it doesn't seem that we're getting. Any, uh, any cooperation or assistance. From any of the studios, just because of the strike that's currently going on. In Hollywood. Um, the Pioneer Walk, um, all on that proceeds. Um, from the evening event is, is going to be coming back to the cemetery committee as a donation. Um, because we also want to see, uh, some of, you know, the, the good that comes out of what. The cemetery committee is doing is trying to restore and, and maintain, um. Especially the sort of great, sort of great sites at, uh, at the Evergreen Cemetery. I myself also have four generations on both sides of the family. Um, encourage there as well. And so my, my involvement aside from. Pride that you didn't do, if you see also item, is it L? I believe L is, is a part of it, which is the liquor permit. That's really, there's a pride involvement in regards to how we will do that. That part of using, um. After the events, having a meet and greets with the honors and characters. Uh, that at the Greenway House after the walk-through and the Pioneer Walk after the cemetery. Um, we really want to keep it as limited as possible in, I guess, in scope of where people roam and meander. The, um, cemetery by having people go to each character's. Great site with a costume character there telling the story. But having people guide people down the path, keeping them in the guided area, uh, more so than having. The, just kind of a free-for-all through the cemetery. Um, and, and as I became aware, the cemetery committee is to make sure that people are out there before it's locked up and that people remain. Locked inside the, uh, the cemetery after, after. So we're, that's bringing back that. Take it. And, and the security and, and the people that will be guiding people through there will have flashlights, um. And, uh, and, and such. We're actually in discussions right now with rangers that all provide some of that. Security, uh, for us.
I being one of the main leaders of the original tour, tried to walk it out and knock out this, uh, not having a guy that first up with them is highly dangerous. I'll tell you why. Because you have terrorist graves, you have big deep holes. Um, I had to walk and fill places in. I had to make sure that we hadn't gone out and asked if every one of the people that let it. Say the specific area. My question also is, as you said, four areas. I'm counting one, two, three, four, five. With the whole stretchy lights for.
That.
Okay, so you got five. So this is my big complaint of fifty to fifty-one. That's. There is no way. That an unguided group of people is not going to walk on the grave and that, that bothers me. Because both are very stifles. You have to. Pretty much have a frame mapped out and have somebody. Need you in order to not step. I mean, it was difficult even when we were sticking with. Hmm, and cemented graves. We didn't even venture out there. And that's one of the reasons I even hesitated in the planning of future ones to do military people about for that. But it's just so difficult not to be, um, disrespectful, you know, in the sense of like, yeah, it's great. So you take the road and you do have, you do have some highly adorable graves there, but you go up to where it says twenty-six, twenty-five, and twenty. Again, if they're staying on the road, that's all quite good, but once they venture in there, that's. The bad to rain there because you're right with their grades. Because that, that one, some of ours were. Um, we talk about lights. Some of my lights are still there. I just love the big spotlights on Warren and. And Chad, and who else I love them off. But how are you going to light them up? You know, we, not only do we have footlights to designate our sites, but we carry them. We, um, we guide each other later. Every person knows we carry a lantern. Um, we can all, we walk, so there was warms of just a light. Um. You know why cemeteries and warlords are locked now? You know? Because it's easier. They ran at night, it's filming, and it destroys so many graves. And I get like, you know, with this point, I have to be certain of it. Because you shouldn't people. Destroys, you know, um, and it's. When you don't have the, turn it, I guess, for a better term, it's hard to keep track of it. Um, I have them in garden area, you know, this map is kind of elusive of such. Not telling us that. Yeah. You talk about Ben saying, oh, yeah, we're going to give all the funds to the cemetery. How do we know? Do you have pre-ticket sales or you go on the death rate?
We haven't, we haven't, uh, to pre-sales yet. And it's also something we don't have to, well, try it. Um, but so that, that would be an, an online ticket sales program. And we'll, we're going to go after you before accounting what, what sales. Are occurring and, and how we're.
So the other is, under your event, it said, I think the Indian groups are welcome to the Pioneer Walk, great, I think, real long. So is that meaning people are going to have their own groups, are they going to be, uh, are they going to stay within the realm of your expectations? I mean, there's, we actually had friends that manipulated. And that was the first fifteen minutes of our tour. We went over the history of the historical cemetery. These are the rules. These are the expectations. This is how you are respectful. Um, and I mean, this is one of the concerns I have. Um, the other big concern I have. Here we go again. I jump on a bandwagon after somebody else started. But, uh, in the sense that, oh, great, he came out there to tour and now, oh, we want to do our tours. I'm really, and I, I was voice like in daytime at the committee. I read, you heard Koma Wong put in papers years ago when they first. It is just. Bothered us. Um, that people over the spooky, spooky in the cemetery. Yeah, I don't know. Maybe because I saw the last film that I had around, but my film. If I was, you know, maybe. He said, I don't know, that's not going to happen. Yeah. That's just the apprehension. And it's just.
As of mine, I mean, I saw that talk too. I found it extremely disrespectful, but, uh. Like I said, I don't foresee any coming at this point based on what. The. Uh-huh. Um, you know, that's, that's something we should have discussion about. I, I personally think that. You know, if there is something that to that extent where they're using the cemetery as even, even backdrop.
And that's what we're right there. He's.
Correct.
What I, I guess, the last one, me and Amy, I can say, she knows. So, I mean, I have a. If you want to talk about that, to bring it to. Now I'm using everything. What's that for? Um, is it can't be because she's got the tourable significance of that.
Right. Um, I think her interest is, is in long-term. She's been doing, um, dinners and events at Greenway House. Um, they have skitters, she's calling it, but it's really, um, we've got people like Marco Tor, who's a historian coming in. And talking about, uh, different types of history and historical figures in and around Bochy's County and Disney. Where they do that. I think this is just an outgrowth of those events where they want to, um, as closer to October. To, you know, do something that will give back to the community. That was one of the biggest things that Francine and I. Had a conversation about is how do we get these events to give back to the community? And how to do so. Um, and we felt that, you know, doing a Pioneer Walk, maybe in the evening to give it a different feel. Would also be able to benefit the cemetery committee.
Okay, so. What I think is, excuse my English, is the only purpose. And what I say is that our families are not selling us. And the community is ready to mark good value. What's your view? Or what?
I, I. Oh, wait. If, if I possibly can, it's going to be in, in. That time period, it's not to be, will be telling their story at that grave site. Um, versus, I'm not, we're not going to have people in, in monster outfits or, you know.
There is. Given some of the people come this. There is no.
I can guarantee you that that's not the event we're planning. If it's going to be a Pioneer Walk, um, of historical figures that are buried in Evergreen Cemetery.
So why don't we just do that to our own cemetery? It's all about, it's just keeping everything historical and, you know, the influence of, some of the people may not know.
I mean, I, I, I leave a point, council member, it's not, she's not the only one involved in that.
Yep, yeah. The biggest stuff. Things from there to, like, love. Paranormal. Chasers, you know, those things. What does that tell me? It's a fact by the law. They're going to have their, they'll be over here. Do you see? This animal. I, this is what I see. Even I watch that stuff. Yeah, I was like, when I ended up watching, I watched on TV. I don't really think that that's a low tier yet, in, um. For our historic cemetery. You don't see that kind of stuff going on in, in the historic, others, yeah, they have tours. They have Halloween tours. They have the midnight lanterns. I got it in Georgia. We're in Georgia, um, cemetery. We're suggesting to them about. Very respectful. And they've done period costumes. I mean, my mom's studio, not what it did. It was the month of, and they didn't, or the day it was day, it was ten years ago. Probably fifteen years ago. And they did their little spiel. And everybody has stress, but, no, it's just. Unguided. Uh, TV stuff, uh, and I, I worry about being unguided. I don't care how, um, well done. And you say you're going to do it after they close, before they close the cemetery. Do you know what time the cemetery closing?
Of dusk.
Yeah, right now it's dusk with about four hundred and fifteen.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, they're looking at, uh, you know, a little bit earlier.
Right. Initial time. Then they're out there. I mean, I just hope, yeah. Is that really good, um? What it all needs to decide. Maybe. Not where you're thinking. I just, uh, yeah, because this is, is, um, I'm just.
I don't foresee us going that late. I don't foresee us going that late.
Yes. Right. Yeah, um. All of the concerns and objections that have been stated were addressed. Wouldn't be a good guess. I think it's still just incredible. The primary thing, the, the nine P L, we have, that's a primary thing to be out before that. But, uh, the primary objection is that it is disrespectful. I think so could be felony, and to allow people, um, free range. From, because, you know, in the, the gates they watch, around five thirty, you can find that. But, you know, and, you know. Um, they'll allow people to run out, hold their phone, you can find there, you know. That's why I have, and, you know, and yes, there's a plan right now, but they're not gonna do that later. And, you know, whether or not it's. I will follow it. So, so even, so if you met all the justice, someone, but at a free range. Of. One through the cemetery. He often is disrespectful. That the primary. There's, of course, it's not good. And we have, it's like there's. There is a state, yeah, that has this very specific, and there's burn. Getting hurt because of, in defense of, oh, yeah, you were the cemetery that we did both. For to do it, but again. They got, they're wise, you know, because I, I wanna make it fair, without a table, but. It's not, well, fine, I, you know. So many of the. Free range, and, and again, no guarantee, no matter how well you want it, and that comes from us, regardless of groups. It was like herding dogs sometimes, you know, you had to really circle up the wagons around, people could, you know, people wanna do their own thing. So, we can, we can make stipulations on this, like you could say, no filming, and also say it has to be lighted. So, there, we can't make those adjustments from the, from the podium here, so that's.
Yeah, we're only.
Oh, yeah.
But we can also change the, the first motion.
Oh, excuse me. I'm moving that. Oh. Okay. I brought it back, I see this as a huge liability because. I feel like if we have people wandering cemetery after dark with no signs, that is uneven, that is right. And when we did the tour last year, I mean, we were, it was really hard not to walk on graves. And of course, you've got people who are gonna split off from the group and do whatever they want, there's no control in that. And even if we have waivers, lawyers can get through waivers for it. Yeah. And it's, and it's, I, I won't go into how I know this, but it's true, and so I just, you know, giving suit because somebody's out there hurting themselves.
Well, for the time of this, some of your concerns, though, I, I don't disagree that. That waivers are not necessarily something that are impermeable, but uh. And I just brought it in, right in court counseling, should all have a copy. Um, it's the insurance policy and city may issue additional insurance. And would be indemnified, um, if anything were to happen.
So what I'm gonna do is move this along, because um. Want to make a motion here by, and even this motion, or send it out to the leaders, so they'll. But I will, all more emotion in that. Like, I don't need enough to fill the part of story that we want.
Part of ruin. Um, one that's unfit for human off to consume due to lack of necessary repairs. Considered unhavilable, for example, but doesn't have that kind of civil defense or something like that. Uh, structure that's determined the vacant and insecure, a vacant and unsecure third. The original definition I got that was just a vacant structure and. There are a lot of plenty vacant structures that are secure and that don't, you know. But aren't occupied more than two or three times a year of people having less vacation homes or whatever they are. So in doing that, I I provided a definition of what a vacant and unsecure structure is. And that provides more detail as to. What is considered vacant is the crimes for it is determined to be this more than three times out of a four month period. And then the final one is that they're they've been born and secured for more than six consecutive months. Essentially. Being able to go and address these properties that are in. Just repair and ruin. In an effort to bring them up to. Current standards, increase the value of the neighborhoods. Uh, bringing private ownership back to. To the properties. And that's essentially what's being asked, but I actually I don't have the uh. Of course, I don't have the red line in front of me as to. But I. That was the intent, what was presented to PMZ was in regard to providing this additional. Uh, enforcement authority for code enforcement when it comes to what is currently defined as a uh, a dilapidated structure. Okay.
Know as well, I have one question for many years. Has a whole new look, I just see, is it part of that? Nobody does this. In that whole. So this will help provide our ability to uh, to deal with some of that. And I follow the basis. That all that they just can. Yeah, so that is that is on that board, uh, I think the other issue that uh, we have there is most we don't know also what can we do. That is easy, but I'll send just. Well, I see the examples we have. So if you put it on fire and make sure that the body is. That's something I never had that on uh, this bureau, the public athlete. Have been bored of uh, over two or three years. Well, that apply to me because it's been applied, I mean, everything is not in such uh, it's been borrowed for almost three years, it's one of my years.
Then there wouldn't be any grandfathering if if. This code change goes into effect. If code enforcement finds a clear distraction that meets the definition of dilapidated structure, the initial loss of. A violation which gives the owner an opportunity to correct it. Gives them specific period of time to correct it. And the city is, we've always stayed in the viewpoint of we will work with you, you know, you need additional time. And so, as long as you're taking steps to correct those issues. It's when the individuals are given the notices of violation, they ignore us, but they say. How's that, what I'm doing, then we have to take it to the next step going. An actual enforcement citation, uh, and then action. They can't afford. Yeah, there are appeal processes just like any other type of uh. Violation, so it's it's not, you know, where the city is going to go out and. Those strong are. Anyway, there's any reason citation and that would be defined, would that be a violation? They're already in the process, and all this does is expand the definition of what a dilapidated structure is to allow for that additional. Enforcement, whether it's residential, commercial, it it applies to all structures.
You know, and the motion for an agreement. I move to approve the notice of intent about what. For in thirty thirty one. And then the code of our city is with the article four, that's more of their. Section nine four point one, that's. Uh, clearly that replacing that to be the definition for dilapidated building. And adding a new subsection B, the gentleman. For vacant and unsecured structure. Excited.
We have a notion of second item three eight as described. Yeah. No. And uh, so it is a.
Councilmember Hill.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacchino.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Councilmember Sweet.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Hi.
Mayor Budge.
Alright.
Okay. Or. It's kind of a lot of, you know, that's. It's. You know, the one. Why I have to bear in mind. Uh, what is asking to renew the uh, Baytown School Greener for St. Joe's Hospital? Uh, it is Admiral Carl. He's who we've been with the last three or four years. I wasn't a part of the regional greener, so all kind of needs been so. But. It's been over, uh, lived over by the city attorney. They made some changes to it and. So this is that what they've been. Hey, the president. There's been on that and the cost of that, but. Yeah, isn't that a lot of cases that they lost in the degree, whilst they're in the hospital, they're all at the station. So now this is. Yeah, sure, um. All of the firefighters or EMPs are very. This is, this gives us medical direction to go around on a call. And treat a patient. We have standing orders from the Baytown Hospital that we can follow to treat that patient. And if we have questions that go wrong or bad, people always call the hospital and they give us advice on. Food and plants and so forth, so it it helps our guys. Guidance, guidance, yes. We work under a doctor. And there. Most of our, um. All of our protocols. Must have something really crazy, it's standing more than time, we know what they are, we don't quite follow these too. Um, unless there's some. Not really. And all I feel maybe. Always nice, fine call, get the doctor. Yeah. Going. It's all good. Oh, far as, far as even your, your patient. They maybe that helps. Maybe provide us with continuing education, no cost, and most of it is. Via Zoom anymore, that's why they they have come wanting passing, the doctors come down and uh, it was just cold days. I think I remember this. And you made a case in that, that somebody always used to come around. It's been.
And just for a while.
We've had, yeah, well, it was. It was, you know, this hospital. Um, initially, we had a EMC for many years. And we went back to. Yeah, this, uh, maybe we went over to St. Joe's. Maybe three or four years, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Before I was in charge. All of that for the year, but yeah, we kind of went around. And we had some issues with EMC, which was our last base hospital. Where. And again, our C E and stuff like that. Actually, one of our. Ex firefighters just went to work for St. Joe's. Brought us on. We've got quite a few uh. New gadgets. Yes. Innovation kits that have the panels on for the organ throat. They can see from a put it on and so, I mean, they felt just more than. Anybody else in the other quarters. And so. And it was.
I don't have issues with that. Um, but. Now they also refill our meds and stuff like that and. Isn't it?
Um, you know, all of our meds usually get refilled at the hospital. Um, if we hear around that. If if something expired. You say, um, we may have to go up there. Once every couple of months to. Exchange our expired drugs. But it's not like it's a weekly thing or monthly, it's. Very seldom. Most of, most of our drugs get replaced by the hospital that we. Enjoy. Yeah. And and we purchase our own, um. Some of the meds we we have to purchase upstairs. Yes.
And so then a lot of us. Um, because we have been. This hospitals. Is it, is this for two years? So. When this is uh. Will be built out and. If you go out and look at other. These. Places or.
Not unless we have any. That was the only reason you looked before is because. Uh, we are having issues with. Yeah. Yeah, we we want, unless there's an issue, but.
You know. I was thinking for people. Then into the last two or three weeks, the agreement between St. Joe's and St. Joe's. Say that. And motion signed by Ford. The blue that. I did prepare this in five, I think, oh, May. There we have, and that's why I salute. Good, thank you. Final five is discussion of possible remodels and complete repair for the public, those. I agree, you know. Oh, yes. Wow. Yeah, I know. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Dancel. Um. So this backhoe has been uh, in the public works police of two thousand eight. As and it is our, it is used, um. As I said, daily, but it is used almost daily, uh, and weekly, uh, to do. Jobs throughout the city, uh, it's really vital to our uh, public workforce, uh, or not force, but uh. Our actions and our jobs. Um, so it hasn't had any major um, repairs like this since we purchased it. So this is kind of rare, uh, there's just been things that have been. You know, messing up, breaking out, we've tried at this extent, well, and using it, and then, and then some major things go down. And we had a holdup to. Uh. What is it, uh? Uh, the fundraising, um. They're the uh, the vendor for base equipment. And uh. So since we have it up there, they're like, let's fix these things that need to be uh, replaced. Cause a lot of times you can't see the alarms that are going off that kind of protect the engine. Because they're not working anymore, so, and this would be split between streams of wastewater. The wastewater does use this to get any twelve. So, um. And that uh, comes out, total is fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety one dollars.
It was the.
Oh, um. It's, it's our biggest backhoe, it's five eighty, which is pretty, something biggest backhoe you can get, but, um. It's one of the. Yes, things what we have, yeah.
So what would it cost to place?
Um, one thousand, yeah. It's like probably two to two hundred fifty thousand.
That didn't mean.
Yeah. Two hundred thousand would be a good. Alright.
Uh. Very nice, uh, you have, um.
Yes.
Yeah, you have one of these.
No, no, none of them are for here. What we, the city boss is. Right? No, 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 I'm all perfect, so when you do, as long as you're. I want to do work, it's gonna be done. But that's a big amount, if they have fourteen thousand dollars. The whole thing, if you take your car to the shop, it'll be ninety days or something, is that gonna be for money? After you start it. Yeah, I mean, most of these, like, variously, uh, replace the AC condenser. Uh, and fuel pour, some of that probably will have uh, components, probably will have a warranty, uh, the grill or bumpers. It won't have warranty, um, the reseal hydraulic cylinders, those are. Boy, I want to keep it, they're out, replacing the zone or they're just resealing. And we're packing it, it's just, yeah, just work, uh. And then they're replacing this right cluster, about it's like your jackboard, pretty much in your vehicle, but it's on the sides of the backhoe. Uh, with the backhoe, so that part of where we have, this is the uh, of the use of it in the vehicle, so it wouldn't have a warranty. So certain things will and other things will not. Um, replace the seat cushion, that's not going to have a warranty. Backup alarm and all the work stuff and headlights, so. Most of this won't because it's. The something that is normally warranty, it's not like something that could. Like a motor or anything, so the thing like the AC condenser and the fuel pour, that's something that would have a warranty.
And this company, the owner for us.
Yes, yes. We haven't had uh, much work had to be done on the backhoe, so they've done everything within the law. But we have to uh, replace.
I have a question, we got problems.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, like I said, things, only things that are warranted were, I mean, the AC condenser, the fuel pour, all the rest are good spot.
Could they water it?
Or, yeah, yeah, those kind of things that watch it.
Uh, if you look at the top, it says, um, includes flush hydraulics, it doesn't want to get contaminated with water.
Um, with heat. Um, with heat and and uh, hydraulic, uh, cause you have a hydraulic tank on the vehicle and with heat from the sun and everything, it can get uh, kind of the station.
So it has two aspects. Yeah, down at the bottom of this, it has one aspect, that's in that valid thirty days before the day, is that meaning it's bid? And then what does the two aspects stand for in the hydraulic?
Meaning that we, that was, we do have, um, hydraulic system with protected water. That's not, if, if there is, there is, that's what I'm saying.
Was the one.
Yeah. For this. Yeah, for this. This is thirty days, that's most. Most companies do it every day, uh, you know. From the last few years, people have been doing shorter and shorter, more, uh. Yeah.
That on there. My question is, um, is this something that? And it's. If there's anything to, or as. Not used to.
Um. Certain parts, yes, and cause it's often is the vendor for case that uh. It, if a case backhoe or machines maintenance work, it goes to software. Uh, case that have an actual, uh, they're the actual vendor for case, um, and they're the ones that. Cause we didn't know some of this stuff that needed to be done, so they're doing diagnostics on it, which they've already done. If we've been charged for that, uh, so this is some of the things that they told us, hey. You know, you need to do a hydro, we have to do a hydraulic flush. You need a uh, AC, new AC condenser, fuel pour, because they've already done diagnostics. So, yeah, it's, it's fast to go with the the vendor, uh, because they can diagnose, diagnose and tell us exactly what needs to be done.
Yes. Thank you. My most need to approve. They did more of us. The way we heard of the public case. By the, um. Um. Favorite. About fourteen thousand two hundred and. Thank you. On motion to sign by fire. To repair our. Backhoe. All of the favorites, anybody seen, I, uh, I can, both may. Very nice, guys. Uh, okay, wait, man. Go. I have sex, this is the second one, the hurdle of taking order, you know, we've already had already the season. These places. Do a couple of stretches of pour. Would they surprise if we're gonna have that in two hundred and twenty three? Hmm, well.
Yes, sir, thank you. So, uh, when the city went out to bid, this is a discussion, um. Comfort system was selected, um, at time, and with even with uh, Corey Poulson, when we did, uh, his, um. Uh, work at at the library, uh, they were, no structural analysis done, um. And then when we did this, uh, bid and granted the bid for a comfort system called HVAC, um. The structural needs were not known at that time, uh, and they had an actual, um, structural engineer go in and assess it, even when. Uh, before the bid was awarded, uh, and then at later time they went back and. And in order for them, for the engineer to stamp it, he doesn't want to, he wants to make sure it's good, so they went back and found that any. Better structural strengthening, uh, to probably accept the new HVAC system. Uh, so the. The original bid, uh, price was two forty three, two hundred and forty three thousand seven hundred and sixty four, but with this, uh, change, it brings it to two hundred and thirty.
Oh. Yeah, that's nice.
Well, yeah, just a little bit of here, yeah, well, yeah, a little, a little bit of history here first, uh. You will recall, and it was, uh, just about one or two council meetings after I came back to work in twenty twenty one. Um, received the report from poster murder. Uh, on variety of things that needed to be improved at the library. Um, and one section that, uh, we had discussed that Steve Black specifically was the structural report. And it basically said nothing. And so, uh, to recall, I had a question on the poster. Uh, during that, um, meeting about. The possibility of having to replace air conditioning systems. Which usually are heavier than pluggers. Uh, without more structural analysis, and I didn't get sufficient answer. Um, so later on, when we got our, um, locations. Uh, from Arvo. Um, you'll recall on that list that when we mentioned that air conditioning for the library. And air conditioning for the two fire stations. That we had given as the cost based on Berthold. Um, and I simply added to that list was structural analysis. Okay, because nobody had done one, but it was pretty clear to my mind that we imposed a higher level. Existing structure rather than, uh, some additional structure, so, um. And wisely, the successful bidder, when you reported the bid to, uh, comfort systems to do that work. Um, that came with a certain amount of structural analysis, but it was determined at that time. Um, that they would have to go in and get a professional engineer to really take a look at it, just, well, the library is like a hundred and eighteen years old. And and then, no building built a hundred and eighteen years ago was built in anticipation of that kind of love. Uh, so they did propose some changes, and those changes are thirty nine thousand dollars. Matt brought that to me last week when we got the information from the vendor. And we checked against the available funds left in the ARCA fund without. Um, taking money away from anybody else. Um, and the funds did exist, so, uh, what you'll see here is the fiscal impact, well, just a hundred forty thousand dollars is fully covered. Uh, in front of seventy nine, which is the ARCA fund. And we'll be able to go ahead and continue good work. So everything's covered and, uh, at least I can one, uh, feel a lot better on that this. Well, the structure was stabilized, then the changes were made. Yeah, because I wanted to. I don't think anybody wants to give you an energy. Thank you. Uh, please. Comment. Thinking about, interdual needs.
And there's.
No, no, it's not.
I didn't. Orders in Albertine Library, the special engineer and employee. Were they advised that they'd be announced in four hundred and thirteen?
I said, and.
Now, the motion is excited. For a call for a load of the, if you're finding that we might reduce.
Uh, no.
Alright. Had to ask.
Yeah, maybe before the box. I'm a curve.
Um. Okay. For to, uh. Put a chain bar on your A P S. All of the favors, I can probably say, hi.
Hi.
Oh, you can. Very nice, guys, hi. And then get going. And final on sound, this discussion possible approval to the award of the contract that you have the letter. Did have a lot of praise after this big pool.
So, uh, we did go out to bid for the electrical upgrades and the district city pool, um, uh, July thirteenth. We received two sealed, two sealed bids, uh, August seventh, um, from Madison, electric corporation. Uh, their bid was maybe thousands of thirty two dollars. And our second bidder was Jim's Electric Services here, uh, with seventy eight thousand and thirty dollars. Uh, and this is to upgrade everything that was suggested, well, was given to us from the, uh, Kennedy Moore. Uh, this is everything in the building, the the lights within the pool, um. The, the electrical or the pumps and the and the variable frequency, um. Variable frequency drive, yeah, so.
I'll switch it.
Yeah.
And there's one.
Analyze every, new boxes, yes.
Okay. Like, wow, did you can't believe you watched it, you know, that seventy something that was here.
No, it it was, I looked on the, on the end of the desk, a hundred and forty thousand.
Whoa. Used. They can local.
However, the pump and the motor are still that.
Oh, no, I.
Yeah, they just. I put that.
I know, I thought.
Yeah, they don't like it, it was a lot of.
So. We can, uh.
We might be coming back to you in the next meeting for the pumping quarter. Yeah, yes, of course, yeah, looking at that.
So we are, we're falling on the pole. Yes. That is the payment of.
Yeah, no, um, so I will be reaching out, uh, if this gets approved, I will be reaching out to, uh. The electric, that's what we, uh, recommend, um, to meet, set up a meeting with, uh, the electric, uh, and APS. We'll need to get APS on board, make sure we get the brakes, uh, three phase, uh, for the for the pool.
And that's putting in fast balls.
Yeah. No, that's not, that'd be.
It's in, yes, it is included in this bid. It's six thousand dollars. I would have had no idea that. Cause I thought before, I thought it followed back to the, to the back of.
Um.
I've got some engine, I do.
Yeah. I don't think it'd be anything drastic. I don't think it'd be anything drastic.
It's not a trace.
Yeah, yeah. But, yeah, that's why I'm going to be calling, if this gets approved, I'll be calling the electric, uh, so, uh, as possible.
We'll be in office.
Okay.
And we'll see.
Yeah.
I mean, I would be here. No.
Okay. All right. Scared my guys, um. They have her findings, comments, all right, uh, and looking for. Four years. I'm really sure if you need an award. I'm going to do those awards contract for electrical offering. It may include critically, to young, so like this services.
I think.
My motion is second. To approve the award contract for the water pump raising the tool, I would favor from how they said, aye, aye. They're gonna have a guy in the house. So. Uh, did you, uh, did you manage your work and, uh? It was not, no.
City manager has moved forward.
All right, so. With that, I'll let, and motion. Thank you, we're. And I was on a second. Probably. There's something. The people. The line. And then it's.
It's not, it's not, it's. And now I'm gonna start.
Um. For the.